This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Ray? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the blessing of life today. We thank you for your blessings on this great city. And God, as we prepare for a new school year, we pray for the thousands of children and students who'll be attending in the next few days and weeks. We pray for their teachers. We pray for their parents. God, we just pray for their protection. That you'll place your angels around each school building. God, thank you for the joy of our children. And God, we just pray that you would just bless them in a mighty way this coming year. Be with the council today. Give them wisdom in the decisions they have to make. Be with our mayor and his staff, administration here as we move forward. Help us to keep our focus on you. We'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on July 28.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 24th through the 30th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. With Ms. (excuse me), Dinesha Jital, come up please. Whereas community health centers are nonprofit, community-owned and operated healthcare providers, providing access to care for all Alabamians regardless of their insurance status or their ability to pay. Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. offers comprehensive primary and preventative healthcare services to over 50,000 people annually, of which two-thirds live below the federal poverty level. Quality of Life Health Service, Inc. is critical to the health and well-being of the residents of Alabama's urban and rural communities, and their comprehensive model for delivering primary and preventative care has been recognized as one of the most successful at improving health outcomes and reducing healthcare costs. Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. has a strong record of achievement for excellence in the care disparities reduction, cost effectiveness, and community health benefit by fostering prevention and integrating the delivery of primary care with aggressive outreach, patient education, translation, and other enabling services. Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. has 21 health centers to educate and facilitate enrollment of eligible uninsured patients and service area residents to affordable health insurance coverage through the federally facilitated marketplace. Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. and other community health centers in the state are participating in chronic disease management projects that reduce disparities, improve health outcomes, and decrease costs. Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. health centers reduce inappropriate emergency department usage and unnecessary hospitalizations by providing essential services known to be effective in preventing and managing chronic illness such as early disease identification and intervention, care management and coordination, and patient engagement. Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. has been and will remain at the forefront of health systems and transformation, including hand-in-hand with other providers to create high-performing health systems throughout Alabama. Therefore, I Sherman-Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim the week of August the night through the 15th, 2015, is National Health Center Week in Gaston and urge all citizens to recognize the important contributions of community healthcare centers in safeguarding health and providing the quality of life for all residents. I want to say myself, I remember when the new clinic was built, then we had former Governor Jim Folsom Jr. was a big part in that by making sure we got the money. And Mr. Davis in the back was his chief of staff, and he had a big hand in that as well. And it's amazing how many clinics they have throughout northeast Alab- North Central Alabama. They also have this distance healthcare thing now where you can go into a place where there's not many hospitals and a lot of the rural hospitals are closing down. But they, we're a good partner with them, and we like for them to partner with us because when Mr. Rowe calls and says he's got a grant for a project, can we participate? We always do, and it's good for everybody. It's an amazing, it's an amazing thing over there, sure is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We do appreciate it. I think it's a good historical point for him to bring up what Mr. Davis was able to do when he was in that position. It matters who you've got in office and in those positions. It really helps you to be able to generate items for your area and your community, so that's very important. And don't want to say, I don't think we can say too much about Quality of Life as a corporate partner. I mean, they've done some wonderful things to the mayor's point and continue to do some great things in our community, so we appreciate them for sure.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask Janet Terrace from the Parks and Recreation Department to come forward and make a special presentation.
On behalf of the Parks and Rec Department, we took over the Barbarian Challenge this year. And some of you may not know, this is Christina Richardson. She is one of the supervisors up at Nakalila Falls, and she was the one who was pretty much heading up the event. She did an excellent job. One thing that the Barbarian Challenge tries to do each year is they try to target different charities and organizations to kind of give back to. And we both talked about it and wanted to try to continue this tradition even with us taking it on. And there are so many different organizations and charities out there that do a lot for the community, and we're very thankful for those. But we started talking about which ones kind of help us a lot, and they're very involved with a lot of the events and everything that we do. And so, on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department of the City of Gaston, we would like to present Chief Carroll with a donation for his car seat safety and awareness. They're very active in all the events and things that we do, and the fire department, they're always willing to help us, and we appreciate that. Sheriff Todd Intrikin is not here to accept his, but they have a Christmas fund they do for underprivileged children, and so we will make sure and ensure that they get that donation as well. So we'd like to thank both of them.
You're not going to miss an opportunity to say something. The council may or may not be aware of the program that we have in the fire service. It's a child passenger seat program which is, was created by Safe Kids, and we have two certified installers at the fire station in order to install fire seats. But in addition to that, we also give those that are underprivileged, those that cannot afford a car seat, the opportunity to have a car seat. We do that strictly through donations, and we do it through some grants, minor grants that we can get, so there's no actual true cost to the city, but it's, you can't imagine how many car seats. I'm one of those techs, and I'm at Central, so you can't imagine how many car seats we actually put in every week. And I actually had a unique situation yesterday with the police service yesterday. We had two children that we thought were abandoned, but we found the parent, but we were able to provide them with a car seat to actually get them to wherever they needed to go. So it's a great program, and we appreciate y'all's support and able to let us continue this program. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, can I say something?
I'm so sorry. We just had a gentleman from the Sheriff's Department to show up. Are you guys accepting the check? And thank them, they're always being very active in a lot of our programs as well. They may want to say something on behalf of the Christmas program that they fund.
On behalf of the Etowah County Sheriff's Charities, we do thank you for this donation. Our Christmas program funds more than 20 children every year, and we tend to do whole families, so we don't want to leave anyone out. This year with this donation, we're looking forward to hopefully increasing the number of children that we're able to help. We do make sure that they get all their basic essentials, their clothing and their new shoes and stuff like that, and then as many items off of their toy wish list as possible. So this donation will be greatly appreciated and put to great use. Thank you.
I wanted to brag on Christina and Janet, Parks and Rec. Those are two hard-working ladies. When you turn something over to them, a project, all you got to do is get it out of the way because they know how to handle it, trust me. They really do a good job for us, and we appreciate them.
Great job.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Councilman Worthy and I went through that program halfway. Why does everybody laugh? But I'm telling you, man, that is, that is a challenge, so the people that finished that were in excellent condition.
All right, thank you.
They always get me and Frankie and Shane and, you know, Courtney and a couple of people. We always go through that course before everybody else to make sure it's going to be a good course.
How many days does it take you to do it?
Yeah, about a week.
All right. Item number eight is unfinished business. We have a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 910 Wilson Avenue in District 2, Earl Morris Chambers and the Exchange Bank of Alabama being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for seven days on July 28th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to ask for a 30-day table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 141 Brookwood Drive in District 1, Joseph A. Woods and your choice properties being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in November of 2012. There was a permit taken out. At that time, there was some repair work done to the rear of the property, as you can see in the picture. The work has stopped. There have been no other improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Could that be a rehab, Brian?
Okay. Look too bad on the outside.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 151 Brookwood Drive in District 1, Jerry McKay Jr. and Leonard Hoyt Matters being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come forward, come to the microphone. Sir, just state your name and address.
I'm Leonard Matters, 613 Highland Avenue, Atala. This is my brother-in-law, Jerry McKay, 613 Highland Avenue, Atala. We'd like to make a plea to the council for 30 days so that we might be able to bring our house up out of the nuisance situation.
All right, have you had any conversations, Mr. Matters, with that gentleman right there? Okay.
If we can't satisfy him in 30 days, we'll get a permit from him, and we'll demolition it ourselves.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Matters. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2012. There was a permit taken out. At that time, little if no improvements have been made. I didn't have a discussion with the owners over the past few days. Been no improvements. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
My pleasure is, Mr. Matters, I'm going to move that we give you 30 days, but if it's not done in 30 days, then it will be abated.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1400 Robinson Avenue in District 2, the State of Alabama and John Ophir being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2012. There have been no permits taken out. There have been no improvements since that time. The work that you see on the front and the side and some of the rear of the house was done prior to the condemnation. The house is pretty much abandoned. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
I move that we abate it.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1015 Slusser Avenue in District 2, Robert Eugene Weston III and Bennett Lee Weston being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? This is actually a corner lot, if I remember right, and so this is going to do a lot to clean up that area. Really wish we could salvage it, but it is definitely a nuisance property. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1117 Steelman Avenue in District 2, the estate of George Gilli, care of Gina Diggs being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in October of 2013. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. President, I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1430 Alabama Street on District, in District 3, the State of Alabama, Larry Thomas Hughes, Paul Thomas Hughes, and Am South Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in September of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I'm going to move to abate, but it looked like we could try to rehab it from just the outside, so let's look at that, Mr. Harbison.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 1206 Short Spruce Street in District 5, the State of Alabama and Orlando Jennings being the last known owners. This is for demolition, which has already been performed, and the amount is $2,741.20. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Building Department.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Just a quick point to note for anybody who's interested, that amount, there's a direct correlation between the weight of the material and the amount of the lien assessed. So generally speaking, if the material weighs more, if there's more brick, more stone, then it's going to be a higher lien assessed. For anybody that's interested. Our final public hearing is a resolution revoking business, gasoline, and alcohol beverage license for the Abama Quick Stop Number 2 located at 1,000 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3. Due to recent arrests for felony crimes on the premises, including possession and distribution of controlled substances, the council has reasonable belief, reasonable belief that criminal activity has been occurring at the business. This constitutes grounds for revocation of license privileges granted by the city. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Any other business caught doing this type of activity will meet the same fate. Thank you.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one, and this is a request from the zoning department. There's an appointment to the zoning board. This is for District 2. I believe James Thornton, who was a member of the zoning adjustment board, has moved out of the city, so the appointment is Maurice K. Wright. So I'm asking for unanimous consent for this resolution to be adopted.
We have a motion to consider today and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted. I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll just say a couple of things about Mr. Thornton. Mr. Thornton, it was, those responsible for this board were very saddened. Mr. Thornton has served us well in that capacity, so, and I've shared that with him. And we also talked about, you know, why he was having to be replaced. He's been a very faithful, very loyal member of that, and a very, he's been a contributing board member as well. You get a lot of people that are there and faithful, but not always contributing. And I think Mr. Thornton's been a contributing member of the Board of Adjustments. Mr. Thornton has moved out of the city limits, and so that's the only reason why we're replacing him. So we really do appreciate his service and what he's done, and we look forward to moving forward with our new appointment. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one. It's a Resolution 274, authorizing change in compensation for directors of Gaston Airport Authority. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, well, Mr. President, this is the only change on here is the compensation will be based on attended meetings.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one more resolution, 327, authorizing change order number two with McCartney Construction on the Black Creek Road drainage project for final reconciliation on qualities and quantities and overages due to planned changes during construction. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, and boards, Kay.
Good morning, thank you for present, Williamson Council. This is First Friday Week, but before we talk about that, I wanna just kinda run through a few other little things that won't take me about a minute. But what part of my job is as Director for Downtown Gadsden is to bring people back to downtown, to remind people that we have a great downtown, and I think we really do, and I think that other people around the state realize that as well. We have a lot of people who commend us and commend the city for backing and supporting Downtown Gadsden. So that's one thing. One way we do this is to entertain people when they come, and I'm gonna start with Musical Mondays. And if you have not yet been, thank you to the council, to the mayor, to Family Savings Credit Union. Every Monday from June through September, DJ Buster gets out there and just plays some great music, and Chef Curly and all of his helpers out there, we appreciate y'all to provide some great chicken wings and Polish dogs and things like that. So it's just a fun thing, every Monday from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Water Wall. And people say, they still say, where is the Water Wall? It's between the Pittman Theater and the Senior Activities Center. So that was, I think, Buster's main reason three years ago, Buster?
Four years ago, when we started this, to tell people where the Water Wall is. So it brings people downtown, it gives them a chance to get out of the office and get out there and walk around. Then also at the Water Wall, we have Third Thursdays from May through October. This Thursday, it's two weeks from this Thursday, August 20th, will be Deidra, the Blues Diva. She's from Birmingham, she and her husband, Keith, will be up here, and she had her band up here in April, for First Friday in April, but the weather was not really good, so it's she and her husband up here, a great... They've got, she's got a great voice, and I think y'all would really like her. So it's one of those things, it's a very small event, maybe 200 people. We only have like 25 chairs, so we encourage people to bring their own chairs, bring their own dinner, and a cooler, and just enjoy that. So that will be two weeks, August 20th, Deidra, the Blues Diva will be here. And then, of course, this Friday is First Friday. We're hoping for a little break in the heat. It's gonna be a good time. We've got, we're focusing this time, we've got basically two areas of focus, the Gadsden City High School Titans, the cheerleaders, and the football players. It's a meet and greet type thing up in the 600 block, and it's a great way to come. We've got the cutout where you can get your, put your face through and get your picture made like you were a cheerleader or a football player. So they're gonna be up in the 600 block, and then hopefully we'll get them out walking around some as well. And then Riverview Regional Medical Center is teaming up with the American Heart Association in the green space at Fourth and Broad, and they're gonna just be doing some fun things, some, maybe some selfie portraits and some education on heart disease. So that's the two focuses that we have this month. Of course, we have great shopping, the stores will be open late, it's from 6:00 to 9:00. The event's actually from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll close the streets a little after 4:00, and clear that out and bring in the food vendors and the entertainment, and we're just gonna have a good night, we hope. And then after that, if you have not had enough, after that, the Summer Concert Series, Dwayne Dopsey and the Zydeco Hellraisers. And let me just say, the mayor said something while I go about Janet Terrence, and if you give her a job, she's gonna take it and run with it. This is a Parks and Recreation event, and thanks to y'all, it does happen after First Friday. This is the last one for the year. So if you like Zydeco music, you're gonna love this group, they are fabulous, and it's really, really gonna be a lot of fun. It's from 9:00 to 11:00, so it continues on after First Friday. If you're a late night person, come on down. You can catch the end of First Friday in that, or catch First Friday like me, go home and take a nap and come back. But anything, there's just so much going on. We have Facebook pages, Downtown Gadsden, Downtown Gadsden First Friday, DJI Third Thursday, we have all kind of Facebook pages. We're on Twitter, we're on Instagram, so the way to find out what's happening is through social media now. Our website, downtowngadsden.com, always, we try to keep it updated and always tell you what's happening downtown as well. And then all else fails, our phone number is 256-547-8696, and we will try to answer any questions you might have, so... Yes, Mayor?
You might explain what Zydeco music is, I've had a few people ask me.
Yeah, you're okay.
And as young as I am, I just really don't know what it is.
Well, it's a different, a New Orleans-style music. I've seen some accordions, and I've seen some things. The only experience I've had with Zydeco music was actually at the Italian Heritage Day last year, and they had a great band out there. So that was my introduction to it. It's different, and it's kinda like a New Orleans style, and it's really, really good.
Kay, do you care to demonstrate?
No, sir. But thank you for that offer. No, well, I'll leave that to the professionals, how about that?
Kay, whatever happened to there's nothing to do in Gadsden, Alabama?
You know, Councilman Reed, I still hear that, unfortunately, and I think it's the people that just have their head stuck in the sand that think there's nothing to do. So there's a lot of great things going on, and I'm proud to be part of that. I'm proud to represent the city of Gadsden, because when I go places, people know who we are. So I think that's a great thing. We have a very positive, you know, but there's some negative stuff out there, there's always gonna be negative stuff, but we have a very, we present a very positive outlook to everybody.
I can verify Buster and Curly. I'm an advocate, absolutely.
Good, good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay, thank you. First Friday is a very popular event, not just in this area, but it's also a very popular event across the state. I can't tell you the number of times that we go to meetings and events where people are commenting on our First Friday. So it's a very popular event, and we need to continue to support it. And I do appreciate Councilman Reed for bringing that up, because it is true. There is, our Parks and Recreation Department does put on a lot of events, they sponsor a lot of events and support a lot of events. So again, we ask that you would just be mindful of those things and get out and support them. And we realize not everything is for everybody, so if you have a concern about a specific group not being addressed as relates to those events, just raise that with Parks and Rec, because they'll be, they have shown that they'll take that into consideration in future planning. Okay, and one other thing before we extend an opportunity to Mr. Reed, there's a video, or there's a group that... And I think the name of the show is Lean, if I'm not mistaken, but they air some footage about the cities across the state. There's a video out on social media where they focus on the city of Gadsden. Very, very positive, very, very good portrayal of the city of Gadsden. They talk about all of our major attractions here, including our downtown area. So if you haven't seen it, again, the name of the show is Lean, and again, I think it's worth seeing it. It's a very quick video, it's about five minutes, I think, but it's a lot of good information.
We have an ad coming out in their magazine, it's really a nice magazine. We didn't know that they were gonna do it, they just sent it to Kay, so it is a good one.
And that's why I talk about us trying to find a format to get out positive information about Gadsden. Because if you don't put out the positive information, people gonna believe the negative. So that's why we work in this council, working, and the mayor's working, so we can find better ways to get the information to the people.
All right. John Reed, you wanna come up?
Good morning, I'm John Reed, I am the homeless and disabled veterans rep for the Fire County area. I'd like to commend the mayor and council on their efforts to promote workforce development in our city and the surrounding area. And especially Councilman Worthy. We're having a job fair, the city is. And August the 5th, tomorrow morning, from 9:00 to 1:00, we're gonna have about 50 employers at the Senior Citizens Activity Center who will be conducting presentations to demonstrate what skills they need in their businesses and allow individuals to make a first impression. You know, Councilman Worthy came by the office, and he saw a need, and he went into my boss's office and said, "We need to have a job fair." And I tried to walk out, and my boss said, "Would you come in here, please?" And we had had job fairs here before, we'd had them here, this would be actually our fourth one, is that right, Councilman Tokes? We've had them over in Antioch, we've had them in New Liberty. And either we had a tremendous amount of employees show up and no people, or a lot of people and no employers. This time, I'm turning, I had to turn some employers down this morning as I walked out of the office, because I hadn't talked to Courtney. And we were saturated, we got 50 employers coming, everybody from Norfolk and Southern Railways, Alabama Power, Goodyear, local employers, Stan Products, Colacraft, Regions Bank, just in number, just the skill set goes across the board. And there's been some discussion about the number of available jobs in the community. I did the research, and I explained to Council Chair Williams that I'm not a statistician, I'm a data miner. Anybody know what that is? I just go on the internet and find data. Within a five-mile radius of where we sit right now, 639 available jobs. In 10 miles, there are 1,133, 25 miles, 27, 38, and within 50 miles, which is not quite in Birmingham, 8,762 jobs. Now, what does that mean? That in Gadsden proper, we got 8% unemployment, which is high. We got about 1,300 people unemployed. So if we can put those people with an employer, we satisfy the requirement. The problem we're gonna have is get people out, but that's always a problem. Because regardless of what people say, everybody doesn't want a job. And I know that, I've been in the business almost 40 years. But I think this job fair is gonna be a good thing. If it turns out like it should, we're gonna have one of the largest in the state, you know? And Councilman Worthy's vision, you know, and my boss's hard work and his ability to delegate, they able to pull this off. And I want everybody to come out and show, we're gonna have the mobile center, we're gonna have a mobile office from the state. My boss is gonna bring our mobile center there. We're gonna have people who will help individuals with resumes. And this will satisfy a requirement that people make to me all the time, I mean, a desire that they have all the time about meeting an individual face-to-face with their resume, because everybody now applies online. So if you got people that are looking for work and wanna make a good first impression on an individual, come on out. You know, the Norfolk and Southern jobs for labor with a high school diploma pay $25.40 an hour. So you're a high school kid, 18-years-old, looking for a career, that'll be the one I'd take, you know? And Goodyear's looking for an oiler, and you can have a GED, and they'll pay $18.00 an hour to lubricate machinery. So the jobs are out there, and they're not all $7.25 an hour jobs. Now, I got some of those. McDonald's is gonna be there, and they're looking for people. Keith, you started at the bottom of McDonald's, by the time you get to be a manager, you make $50,000 a year too. So something to be said about that. So that's all I got, any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. What about age? Well, let me tell you, let me tell you about that, 'cause I had a guy from Norfolk and Southern come in, and I'm 65-years-old, and I said, "Man, listen, I need a job." He said, "John, we just hired a guy 56-years-old last week." And generally, you know, when you get over 30, you think, "Man, I'm on the dark side, there's not many jobs for me out there." But there are jobs for people who wanna go to work. And we got a senior citizens program too. Really, really good.
John, tell them about the path where if they qualify, the Career Center will pay for them to go get a two-year degree or a four-year degree.
Oh, yeah, yeah. As far as workforce development goes, there are a number of programs in our office. They are following the WIOA, and it's workforce development, and if you qualify, you know, economically disadvantaged or lost your job through no fault of your own, like the people at Crown College, we're about to lose 100 jobs in the next couple of weeks. Those people will be entitled to about two years of paid education through the state of Alabama, you know? We got a program that will pay half your salary, we call it OJT, while an employee decides whether or not you can be trained. So if you're looking at a 12-hour dollar, $12.00 an hour job, we pay six, and he pays six, so he gives a quality employee for six bucks an hour. But people need to apply for the programs. My old man used to say, "If you don't buy a ticket, you can't win a ref." You know, you can't sit at the house and complain to me, "I don't have a job," when you're not out looking for it. This work out there. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna give all the credit to Career Center, to John Reed, Johnny Brothers, Elsie Jackson, and Mr. Foster. They have done an outstanding job on this jobs fair. And so all we could do is beg people to come and try to take one of these jobs. You have an opportunity, you just have to come out and apply, and dress for success when you do come out. 'Cause we're gonna, employers will be there to interview you, and some will hire you on the spot if you meet their criteria. So we have interview rooms set up for you at the Senior Citizen Activity Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you, we really, really appreciate the efforts on the part of both the Career Center and Councilman Worthy for what he's doing. And again, I appreciate John Reed for sharing a lot of information and data, that's always important, because, you know, everybody's not a data miner, a lot of people are just, they really expect kinda the data to fall in their lap, or the information to fall in their lap. So it's good when we can, when we can set it up for people to receive that information. You know, along with what's been said today and the efforts that they've been doing, there was some discussion today also, and I think everybody knows, the mayor's a huge champion, has been for years, for career tech. And every opportunity he gets, he's pushing career tech. There was some discussion today about putting our new career tech director at Gadsden City High School in contact with the likes of Frankie Davis, and Mike McCain, and Greg Bennett, and some of those other folks, Tim Green, and some of those other folks who are, you know, when we're asleep, these guys are really, you know, pounding the pavement to put Gadsden on the map from an industrial development standpoint and industrial recruitment standpoint. So there's a lot going on to try to create opportunities, but to the point that Councilman Worthy made, we really gotta, we gotta encourage our folks to get out there and take advantage of them, that's the key. Okay. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor?
Just going to say, Monday is back to school, so be safe and be careful as our children go back to school.
Councilwoman Ellis? Councilwoman Worthy?
Just a couple announcements, I'm not even gonna talk about the job fair since John just did an outstanding job, but the August the 8th, which is Saturday, starting at 8:00, could be registration, and then it'll go from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Edgewall County Courthouse parking lot. They're gonna have a Hope Celebration, that's back to school, that's what the Hope Celebration's all about. Quality of Life is leading it, but several different churches and organizations have partnered with Quality of Life, and the first 500 kids will receive a backpack with a voucher in the backpack. And you take that, those kids, and take that voucher to school, give it to your teacher, and you will get your supplies. That's how we're gonna do it, we wanna change it up instead of putting the supplies in the backpack. The supplies will be already at the school. So I encourage everyone to come out, they're gonna have the bounce houses, and they have a lot of entertainment for the kids, they're gonna feed them and all, so please, if you know anybody that need back-to-school material, please bring them out. And they want an adult with them, so a guardian or someone to be there with the kids. The location is at the Edgewall County Courthouse, it's gonna be in the parking lot, and I believe they're gonna have a bus route. Colonel Harris from the school is gonna run his bus, and they're gonna, he gonna come around. I don't know if they put out the areas yet, and they're also gonna have churches going around with their church vans to bring the kids up, so thank you.
Okay, Councilman Billis?
I'd like to, Buster Porch, stand up a minute, please. Buster? These are the guys that are responsible for the free food on Mondays, and I can't think of his name right now. Curly, and I eat there a lot, so I just want everybody to know that it's very, very good food, and they do a good job at what they do. Thank you, that's all. Thank you, that's all.
Councilman Cannon? Okay, Councilman Reed?
I don't know who the lady is that cooks the pound cake. She the one, Buster, you and Curly both know that, absolutely. There you go, I knew. Now, folks, that young man is Terrence Bush, in case you want to know, okay? And we'd like also to welcome this morning Anderson Roberts for coming by too. It helps. And the last thing I've got to say is, I apologized last week, I said there wasn't anybody in the audience, and you were there. I apologize. Okay? That's all.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. There will be a District Two meeting on this Saturday, August the 8th, at the East Gaston Community Center at 10:00 a.m. Okay, so we really encourage everybody to come out, a lot of information to share. It's been a while, we made a conscious decision to put off the frequency of the meetings because the attendance wasn't nearly as good as what we'd like, so we're again going to, you know, we decided to meet less frequently to see if we could gather more information and maybe gather some interest that way. But again, that's going to be Saturday at the East Gaston Community Center, 10:00 a.m. on August the 8th. And just to the point that Councilwoman Todes made about back to school, let's get out and be mindful that our children are going to be back out, back transitioning to and from school in the morning, so be mindful of that as we make our own commutes, and also let's go out and support our children. I think that's the important thing. A lot can be said, and a lot of comments can be made about our school systems, but I think what's most important is that we get out and support our children. Okay? Also, there's a, I want to be sure to announce this special event, there's a call for the community to pray for schools citywide on Sunday, August the 9th, at 6:00 p.m. Prayer will be held at the following schools. C.A. Donahue Elementary, Floyd Elementary, Mitchell Elementary, Thompson Elementary, Litchfield Middle School at the football field, Gaston Middle, Emerson Middle, and Gaston City High School. So everyone is invited to attend and support that event. Okay? Is there anything else? All right, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.